We need twelve and thirteen.
Item twelve, consideration and action on resolution number twenty ten dash zero forty-three to authorize publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation to finance various public improvements in the city of Brownsville.
Would you approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Montoya, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Twelve.
Item thir- uh, item thirteen.
Item twelve is your writ, uh, in notice of intention. Is that right?
Gentlemen, item thirteen.
Yes, if anything, Mayor, just to clarify, uh, the, the item twelve that you approved has a caption in there that included issuing fifteen and a half, fifteen point six million, right?
Oh, it's thirteen six.
Thirteen six, I'm sorry, thirteen six. What we want you to do for the record is deduct that by seven million two.
Okay.
So that you won't sell fifteen mil- you're not asking the voters, I mean, you're not asking the citizens or telling the citizens that you can borrow.
Can I have a motion to reopen that?
Sir.
Okay, we have a motion to reopen it, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, the original motion will be amended to deduct the seven point two million dollars
That's right.
from the proposal.
Yes.
Okay, and all the rest will be, is approved.
In the notice of intent to issue an amount not to exceed six million four.
As stated, as stated by, uh, by, uh, by, uh, we have a motion and a second, Commissioner Atkinson, second, sir. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That, that should take care of it.
And then thirteen?
Thirteen changes.
Who?
Thirteen changes, I believe.
Let me, let me read that, okay?
Now, we need to change thirteen.
Item thirteen, consideration and action on resolution number twenty ten dash zero forty-four to authorize publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation to finance improvements at, near, or adjacent to the Brownsville Sports Park.
Okay, would you, uh, state it how you want, how you want it read?
I think, uh, Mr. Gonzalez gave you on the packet, uh, an agenda item that was prepared last Thursday or Friday, and the, uh, the authority, the corporation voted to give you a grant, not to borrow, so then the amount reduced to three point three. And that's what was presented tonight for purpose of, of finance. So whatever the ordinance says in your package has to include now an amount not to exceed three million three instead of the six million, so whatever, seven million.
I, I move to, to acknowledge the amendments made because of, we didn't have to go out for so much on that one, so it's, to approve three point three million for the improvements for Brownsville Sports Park.
Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Gowen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve thirty is done, fourteen is done, fifteen sixteen is done, um, we need to go back to the public hearings.
We need to go back to consent agenda items.
Item three, please.
Item three, consent agenda items A through B.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, Commissioner Montoya, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Item four.
Item four.
Public hearing in action to adopt October one, twenty ten to September thirtieth, twenty eleven budget for the community development block grant program, home program, and the emergency shelter program.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable Commissioners, um, tonight we have our presentation on the budget for our entitlement funding. Uh, I do want to take this time to thank Mr. Jesse Gasol, Chairman Ricardo Hernandez, our Vice Chairman, and all the members of the BCAC Committee, they were great this year, really worked with staff. It was a, it was a single process, it was very good, so, uh, I think they got a lot of, out of it, and, and we, the staff did as well. Staff here's Lucy Garza, uh, City Manager, uh, Rolando, uh, our Homeless Coordinator, and also the other staff, Ramiro, and all the other staff of the Planning Department. Really, it's a team effort that puts, uh, the committee, uh, works with the committee. We reviewed all the proposals, staff and all the committee members reviewed this, all the proposals that were submitted this year. Usually always more than we, that we can afford, uh, but, uh, but they prepared a good presentation for you, Mr. Gasol.
Who's the, who's the chairman of the committee?
Uh, Jesse Gasol.
Please, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Commission, my name is Jesse Gasol. I was honored to be the Chairman of the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee, and we're pleased to submit to the Commission for its consideration our, our proposal, and obviously its advisory in nature. I, along with Mr. Hernandez and all the members of the committee, worked quite a few hours, spent quite a bit of time, we went through all the proposals, and took votes, and also conducted public hearings to consider the, the public's input. And we're here to submit our proposal and our recommendations to the Commission.
Okay, on the, uh, one point three, two nine, uh, for engineering streets you got there, you got a list of streets there?
Yes, we do.
Can you provide that for us? Or can you put it up there so people can see it? It's a million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty, we're going to be spending on, on the streets there. You got East Elizabeth Street, I can't see that far. East Second Street in Jeff- to Jefferson. East Third Washington to Jefferson, West First Elizabeth to Fronton, West Second Elizabeth to Fronton, West Third to Fronton to the railroad tracks, West Third to Fronton and Saint Francis, Kennedy and Oval Military South, West Twelfth Elizabeth to Fronton, West Eleventh Elizabeth to Levy, West Tenth Elizabeth to Levy, West Ninth Elizabeth to Fronton, Camp Quat, Camp Quat?
Camp Quat.
Camp Quat. Center Drive, uh, two eighty-one Kennedy, I don't even know where that thing is.
District four.
Where?
District four.
Is that all your district?
Yeah. Was I gonna get any of them? These were, these are already-
None of our districts got any streets.
Anyway, since, no, now, what, what streets you're talking about.
These streets are already done.
Okay, uh.
No, these, these streets are, these streets have already been done.
These are the streets being done this year.
I was on Kennedy last time, and it's done, all right.
Well, we're gonna put the, the new ones, I'm sorry.
These are streets that have already been done.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, let me just read so people know what we're funding.
So they're gonna repay?
Amigos del Valle, BECHC, Brownsville Don- Literary Center, Casa, Monica's House, Consumer Credit Counseling, Friendship for Women, Girl Scouts, Tip of Texas, Good Neighbor Settlement House, Infant Nutrition Program, Library, Moody Clinic, Bosnian Center, Ronald McDonald House Charity, Senior Community Outreach, Sunshine Heaven, Tip of Tex Family Outreach, United Way, Valley AIDS, BHC, COB Planning, Home Administration Funds, uh, Planning Administration, Finance and Accounting, Indirect Costs, Code Enforcement, uh, Loan Repayment of the, uh, Caver Park, Linear Park, for a total of one million, two hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars.
Yeah, of, yes, Mayor, that, those are the, and Mr. Gasol was gonna read that and with the allocations, but, uh, but here are the streets, and, and basically what City Engineer, uh, submitted was by different quadrants of the city, uh, of course, his request was, uh, was not funded completely, it was two million, of which he only, uh, got funded a million, a million three, so.
The acronym BECHC is the Brownville Community Health Center?
Brownsville Community Health Center, yes.
Okay.
And that's for, uh, diabetes testing scripts.
Well, come on, others.
I'd like, I'd like to ask a question, real quick from the Chairman, just so, so there's transparency, and I know your board met over the application for the Boys and Girls Club, why did y'all feel y'all shouldn't fund that board?
That's not fair to them to respond.
Why, what, they, they can explain why it was, I'm sure Melissa would wanna know.
I've already been, I've already said-
But I'd like to know, why, what, what y'all felt on why they, they didn't fund it?
On the what, I'm sorry?
On the Boys and Girls Club for those Fresno's.
Well, Commissioner, there was, it was all discussed in a non-public meeting, and the reason it happened that way is so that the, the members will be free to discuss their opinions. I could just tell you that the due diligence was, was provided, and it was basically every, every project was examined, you see the, the stack here of the applications that you looked at? We had about four of these or five of these, and we also heard the presentations, we considered all of them, but there were concerns expressed on some of the projects, and my recollection is this was one of them. If the committee members wanna come before the Commission and, and express that, that's fine, I was the Chairman, I, I presided over the meeting, uh, and I felt that it was almost unanimous, basically, if not unanimous, in the vote, but I just don't feel comfortable expressing to the-
No, that's fine.
-Commission.
I don't need to, it's okay.
I don't think it's fair either, because, I mean, uh, it's, it's not one person that comprises of the board that puts the, the process into decision making, and I think it's not fair to much.
And we are an advisor committee, this Commission obviously is not bound by what we did, if it chooses to do something different.
We're welcome to go to your, your, your board, uh, meetings and voice our support or opposition, or requests.
Correct.
I've been to a meeting, like, a minute for what you do.
Well, the Committee-
I know the, the wish list is a mile long, and the pocketbook is, is limited when you're doing a lot for this committee.
Well, I can say the committee members worked very hard, and like I said, they exercised due diligence, they, they pored over the documents, considered the presentations, on some occasions asked questions of staff, and got some staff input, and at the end, we brought it all together and tried to reach a, something that was fair to every, as fair as we could to everybody.
I appreciate it, thank, uh, we have said, thank you. Okay, this is an action item.
Would it close?
This is a public hearing, uh, motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is an action item.
Would it approve, second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve of Commissioner Montoya, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion?
I, I have something to say. Ben, because, uh, um, the two point something million for the gym that was gonna come out for, what happens with that money?
Well, I think that's still pending.
Oh, still pending.
I mean, I think that was, it'll come back in two weeks. No problem. And, and keep in mind, this, you approved it tonight, so our comment period begins, so the, you know, on, um, July the twenty-third, we'll, you know, the comment period will end, and then August first we'll come back, and, and we'll, uh, discuss any comments that were in the plan.
Back to this here, we have a, a motion, second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item five.
Item five, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty ten dash two thirty-five dash, I'm sorry, point sixty, to amend the City of Brownsville Code of Ordinance as Chapter thirty, three forty-eight zoning, Article Six, overlay districts by amending section three forty-eight dash nine sixty-two, intent to include the ENT overlay district and adding section three forty-eight dash ten ninety-five downtown Brownsville Entertainment Overlay District.
Honorable Emergency Commissioners, the purpose of the entertainment overlay district is intended to promote the revitalization of downtown Brownsville by designating a downtown entertainment overlay district and encouraging the development of entertainment facilities and venues. As we had a workshop at the last meeting, the area colored here is the boundaries of our entertainment district. In this ordinance, uh, quickly we'll go over, and, and Ramiro may have some, some slides that we'll show you on, on, uh, tax increments, but basically in this, uh, in this ordinance, uh, Commissioners, is that there are several, uh, items discussed, uh, for us to approve tonight. One is that the, uh, it will create a downtown, uh, Development Review Board, and this review board will be composed of the Planning Department, building inspections, fire, uh, historic heritage, and health. And basically, they will, uh, develop a permitting process, as you, um, as you have it listed here on the screen, and basically they'll review and facilitate the development of downtown, uh, venues, entertainment venues in, in, in the boundaries that I discussed with you. In here, they list specifically, um, the, the boundaries, uh, the specific uses, um, they will work with, uh, maybe, uh, expediting the, well, expedite the, the code compliance, the application process, um, and it would specifically, uh, to what is not allowed in the, in the entertainment district and what is allowed. It will, businesses will be required to go through the, you know, through the building process, but this will facilitate that by having, uh, this review board give recommendations and approve them, uh, as, as they come in, and, and it's a special permit, it's, it's an application, and that will be, um, housed in the Planning Department. The general requirements of an entertainment venue would be a minimum of a thousand square feet, um, and of course, there's flexibility on that, and that will go before the, uh, Downtown Rev- Development Review Board, um, so there's also, uh, requirements of the listed requirements of the, what's required of the establishments, and they would, of course, have to keep, uh, vandalism and, and crime at a minimum, they have to pick up, or keep their areas clean, and of course comply with all ordinances and, uh, health ordinances and building ordinances, of course. Of course, there's also requirements of distances from schools and, and churches, at least two hundred feet from, uh, from a school. And then in the last section, uh, you have the prohibited uses, which is sexually oriented businesses, amusement arcades, blood or plasma donation centers, mortuaries, group quarters, daycare centers, or schools for persons under eighteen years of age, payday lenders, car title, uh, lenders, or check cashing establishments. Also, uh, of course complying with all the historic preservation ordinances, and also all the, the sign ordinances, of, of course, and design guidelines, uh, being developed by the Heritage, uh, Department. So that in a, in a summary is, is, is the, is the overlay district ordinance. Uh, Ramiro, do you wanna discuss the increment?
But is there a cost for the ENT permit?
That-
Two hundred dollar cost.
Yeah, and that will be part of our presentation at the next meeting on fees.
Now, you do set up, you've set up a, an ex- well, an internal board with planning and, and, uh-
The departments related to-
I'm sorry, but it does include Peters for, right?
Yes, yes, it does.
I don't know, um, this is feasible in life, but people, to come here downtown and try to set up some type of business, it's, it's like this, it's a highlight, it's a lot of money, it's all about, you might need to do this, it's not there yet as far as the state. Have you all thought about doing tax abatements for the first two years for new businesses that come into downtown, whether it be restaurants, you know, business?
Yes, and, and that will be part of a, of, of a second presentation in, in future meetings, Mayor. Right now, what we're trying to develop is the overlay itself, with boundaries, with what's permitted. The city has already invested money into the sidewalks, the lighting, trees, this, we're hoping to work with investors, which, there may be some in the room, uh, people have visited our office, that are ready to, to begin in downtown, but nobody wants to be really first, but I think this will facilitate that the city's behind them, uh, the city wants to, you know, help them with their permitting, or maybe with their fees, uh, and, and to control really what's, what is gonna be allowed in this overlay district, you, you know, you wanna know what's gonna happen in this district, you wanna know what will be permitted, who will be your neighbor, will the facilities be clean, will, you know, so all of that, uh, we're hoping that this is really laying the foundation for all of that investment to happen.
By saying, by saying token, where you have tax abatements, but also you would have some kind of fee for property owners to, to maintain-
Yes, and that, and that will happen, right now, uh, we've already assessed them for our sidewalks or lighting before, uh, so it's not really, we can't really go back and see, and tell you right now, we're gonna assess you when there's really nothing.
Well, they gotta, you gotta know what they're-
Right, so, so we wanna, we wanna jumpstart that, we, we wanna, that will come later.
This is the creation of a entertainment district, an overlay, and, and part of downtown Brownsville.
Yes.
And so there's others, other things that are to come, and you mentioned some of those.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure the, the things are accounted.
Right.
I know that you had applied for CDVG funds for abatements or incentives, and were you approved?
We, we applied for a facade improvement, uh, grant, and also revolving loan funds, uh, they were also not approved.
They weren't approved.
No, they weren't, so.
So none of the applications you submitted for CDVG were funded?
No.
Okay, getting off the topic, too. Did you die in both your own business? Any further questions on the ordinance?
All I wanna say is that I'm glad city staff has been working with, I know there's been Commissioners here that have been pushing for it, and, uh-
The Mayor, too.
And the Mayor, too. I think we've all been pushing for revitalizing downtown, I think this Commission, be it that we argue sometimes, but you know what, I think we want what's best for our downtown area, and there's nobody more committed than a lot of us on this board that are trying to get that done, but it's, it's, it's been a long time coming, the people, past boards have been trying to do it forever and ever, but I think we're, because we argue, I think, and we want what we want, I think we're all in cons- in, in agreement that this is something that we need to do for downtown, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it.
Yeah, it's part of United Brownsville, but also thank Ramiro, I mean, he really took this under his, his wing, uh, and I think there's some, some people of property owners in downtown that are waiting for you, uh, give approval of this, yeah.
We, I've been waiting to hear that.
Well, I'm moving to close public hearing.
Well, we need to do it right, Mayor, and, and-
I'll second that.
I'm moving to close public hearing.
Okay, we got a motion to close public hearing, second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is an action item to approve.
Approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item six.
Item six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty ten dash zero ten, to rezone from apartment G to professional office G, Lot twelve, Block eighty-one of Brownsville Original Townsite, located at five fifty-three East Washington Street.
Honorable Mayor, this is the property shaded in red, uh, they wanna have a professional office, uh, this is a home being converted into a professional office, Plan Zoning Commission Board is announced to approve this recommendation to you.
Okay, um, this is a public hearing, anybody for or against it? Okay, can I have a motion to close?
Would it close? Would it close?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close, uh, by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Montoya, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is an action item, motion approved, Commissioner Samora?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
Item seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty ten dash zero eleven, to rezone from dwelling A to professional office G, Lot nine, Block B of El Harding's Terror, El Harding Terrace subdivision, located at thirty, three eighty-eight, thirty-eight, eighty-eight Boca Chica Boulevard.
Honorable Emergency Commissioners, uh, in this particular case, they wanna have a professional office, it's on Boca Chica, um, if you get a map, uh, this, this case does, um, does have some residents opposed to it, uh, the tan color area is the, uh, Acasa Lake, uh, Neighborhood Association, they have approached the Plan Zoning Commission in opposition on this case, but it was unanimously approved, uh, by the PMZ, uh, the areas that are shaded in red, it's front of Boca Chica, and they do wanna have a professional office in this particular case.
The risaka is a buffer between that.
There is a risaka behind it, yes.
But you limited it to, to professional office?
That's what they're asking, yes, it's only professional office, yes.
So they asked for a higher drone?
No, they're asking for professional office.
Because, I mean, I would have thought that would, that would have gone for more commercial.
Well, that's kinda the trend, Mayor, there, you have, we've already approved a, a, a bookkeeper, there's an attorney, and there's a surveyor, so all professionals, yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing, um, is there anybody here for or against? Okay, you wanna come up?
Uh, good evening, Commissioner, Honorable Mayor, my name is Chris Valades, and, uh, I'm here representing my, uh, my father, that is the owner of this property, and, uh, I just wanna give you a little background on the, on this property, we have applied before, we've owned the property for fifteen years, and we were the first ones, I believe it was the first, the specific use application, that, that we tried to, to do on this, because of, of the strong opposition in that area back then, uh, to, uh, to oppose, uh, this, this part of town, which fronts Boca Chica, uh, uh, they, they opposed to, of it being commercial. Now, the, through the years, you know, we were the, there was no commercial development, and as Mr. Ben Medina said, stated, there's already three there, and the trend is to go, uh, professional G, uh, the designation of professional G zoning, and that's what we're asking, uh, and the opposition, uh, what, what their concerns are, and I think, uh, professional office G being the most restricted of, of, uh, of zoning designations for commercial properties, I think it takes care of all the, all the concerns of, of the opposition has, which is, uh, the risakas, they, they wanna maintain a buffer between the risaka, well, that's a very deep lot, and we wouldn't want, uh, to build anything closer to the risaka, I mean, and we also have setbacks, I mean, this is just the, the zoning part of it, be, uh, we would have to then go get it-
What is, what is the setback from the risaka? They want twenty feet, is that acceptable?
Well, I think that, I was in the plan, on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and I believe that's, it's more than that, so we don't, we, we have to go, we have to abide by whatever, whatever-
Ben?
Ben?
Benito?
Benito.
Uh, the setback, what's the setback?
Well, the, the setback in the, in the rear, rear yard is three and a half feet.
No, the, the, the people that called me, they said they would like at least a twenty foot setback.
And-
From, from the risaka.
Yes, but that's a request, but, but the ordinance itself has three and a half feet.
Okay, can, can we work, can we, can we, to be willing to amend it to twenty feet?
We, we do not have a problem with the twenty feet of the risaka, now, but another, another concern that the opposition has is regarding the parking, they would like ten parking spaces, and I, you know, the reason that, uh, for fifteen years we've been trying to, 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 you know, to develop this part-
But the parking is subjective to the size of the building?
Exactly, and not only the size of a building, it's, uh, I think the ordinance reads every hundred square feet of the building, you, you need one requirement, uh, it requires one parking space, that, uh, the building, that the structure that's there right now is close to three thousand square feet, so it would require, just ordinance itself requires me to have thirty, thirty spaces on, 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 on particular business, and it also, there's another, uh, require-
Depending on business that you-
Exactly, on a professional business, say you have a professional business, you, the ordinances also say that you need one parking space per employee, now, just to give you an example, you say, well, you know, how many employees can you get, there are professional offices, I have a good friend of mine, Carlos Marine, that has Ambio Tech here in Brownsville, and he employs over forty employees, so he's required to have at least forty parking spaces, so I wish, I wouldn't want, uh, this Commission to stifle us and, and, and restrict this to, to parking of ten, because we wanna develop this land, and the people, we've had interest in people, uh, developing and renting it from us, but, you know, it's always been the opposition of these, uh, of this homeowners association, and then, and, and, but the mere designation of the professional office G zoning, I think safeguards against their concerns.
What size is your lot?
Uh, the lot is, I don't know the, the exact measurements, but it's over two acres, a little over two acres.
So it could be, it could end up being reset by, also, by a big company.
It could be, but what I want, what, what's, what's, uh, not enabling us to move forward on this is because there has been a lot of interest there to, to use it.
You don't mind the twenty foot setback?
I don't mind the twenty foot setback.
You have, you have the risaka as a buffer, and it's really far away from Casio Lake entrance, show, show me where the Casio Lake entrance is, Ben? You have the risaka as a buffer and it's really far away from Acacia Lake entrance. Show, show me where the Acacia Lake entrance is, Ben. It's not right, it's not near there, is it?
It's, it's quite a bit.
That's right, it's right here.
It's, it's, it's a ways from there, right?
Yes.
That's, it's right here.
I just, I just wanna get a good picture of where you're at.
Oh, that's all, here's Owen's.
That's Owen's, Acacia Lake.
Right here.
No, he, 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 he's having it rezone right now and he's agreeing to the twenty-foot buffer.
He sells it.
No, it goes, it goes in the deep. It goes in the deep. The restriction will be created by us. Ben?
On the lot, if any, anybody else would want to do anything with that property, that, that restriction would have to be met.
It would go in the deep and Ben would make sure that it's applied, right, Ben?
And I will ask the Mr. Sassi, the question is, on this specific ordinance, it's, they're applying for a professional office. Well, we don't, we do not do deep restrictions, but can, can they impose a restriction on a blanket zoning case or does it have to be referred back to P and Z for a specific reason?
With the zoning change, you better flip back to the P and Z.
But, on the, but it, it does not, when you designate, like, let's, it, it does not need a deep restriction because the designation of a particular lot, that's what it is. If, you can zone it now and check it ten years later and that's what it's gonna be with amendments.
So, we can make a motion here based on that?
Exactly. And that's, that's gonna stay here until anybody wants to come in, get a permit, they're gonna look back to the, what zoning that particular lot has and they're gonna read there, it's...
But if you have the review restriction, you can do that.
We can make the recommendation out of body, as the way the commission...
Make the motion.
Make the motion, set that place.
We have some people here. Are you all together or...
We're all together.
You all together? Do you have a spokesman for the group? Because I, I assume everybody's saying the same thing, right?
No.
No? Everybody's different. Everybody's different.
Well, yes. Back in nineteen seventy-one or seventy-five, the city passed a rural... I'm sorry?
Did you mind the vision?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lois Lewis. Back in nineteen seventy-five, and it's, this is in your packet, it's a resolution by the city to create a suburban rural classification for neighborhoods. And we applied for that as a neighborhood and you'll see the map on the top. And this does not match the map that the city has, but this is an existing map that is with your city. The map that you have is, that all is labeled dwelling instead of suburban rural. So, that is one issue that needs to be addressed. The other issue is that it's not just Acacia.
Can we actually, would you go before the P and Z, the council?
Um, we, um... No. Okay. I mean, for various reasons, but the answer to that is no. I mean, for various reasons that we can't, okay. Right now, right now, the, the buildings that are there allow for this suburban rural, allows for the forty to fifty feet. If you look at all of those and we have a, a PowerPoint for that, is that gonna be allowed?
Will you put the fire ring on, please?
The petitions are signed by Rotama Drive, Billy Mitchell, and Acacia Lake, not just, you know, it's a wide variety.
Would you please tell me, please tell me how Acacia Lake is impacted?
All right, this is, yes. It, it impacts our neighborhood as far as, like I said, it's, it's owned rural suburban. And that is our whole area is rural suburban. This is the structure that is there. It would be very hard to zone this specific use, which is what everything else has gone into because of its condition. So, that, it would have to be removed most likely and...
Commissioner, I guess it has a question.
I, I would just like to add, because somebody wants to come in and tear all that down and put professional buildings right next to existing professional buildings. And I went out there, by the way, to take it out. I knew there's some opposition to this, but I had to see where y'all were coming from and all this area, the Acacia Lake area especially, you're way on the other side of the risaka.
No, sir.
Way inside, yes you are. Yes you are.
Acacia Lake is our whole neighborhood, sir.
And that's behind the, the existing lot, which is all wood, wood area.
Okay.
You're talking about way to the left, would you would see the first house across Acacia Lake?
The, the city...
No, I'm not, but I'm just letting you, letting people know that.
The city came up around us, sir. The city grew up around us. We, as, as, as a, a neighborhood association, had the rural suburban zoning classification created for the city, which you all have used for other...
But you, you're not ruling, you're, you're...
No, yes, because the city has grown up around us, but we can still protect our rural setting.
I mean, you're still...
All right, this is the other ordinance in, that's in your packet that, that you all have created. And this is how to create zoning with residential.
Yeah, but that's the place to go before the P and Z.
Okay, but we're, we're doing, we're, you're, you're voting on us today?
Yeah, but P and Z is recommending to us, they passed it unanimously, is that right? The staff has, has passed, is recommending, and you're bringing us based on suburban rule, which has not happened from here now.
Well, yes it is.
Well, I think you should pick that up with the plan.
Okay, I'm going to let, so, uh, these are the people on Boca Chica.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Lorenzo Lozano and I am the neighbor next door. Lorenzo Lozano? Yes, and I am the neighbor next door. I think they have some pictures of my house.
This is in your packet.
I bought the property about three years ago. I have five daughters and thinking it's a, a home state for us, for my wife and I. We spent over three hundred thousand dollars on that house, you know, and as, as a neighborhood, I like the neighborhood. I like the setting, the risaka, it's beautiful. And I wouldn't want, you know, as far as, I know it's some kind of commercial, because Ms. Lou will tell me about it. But as far as building, big building and, and especially it's a flood zone, you know, it's, I know, I don't know if you guys know, it's the first half of our property and his property, it's in a flood zone. We've been trying to address that. We put some money in the house and, you know, as far as it being a big commercial for parking and building or whatever. It just knocks our purposes, you know, building our, our house, home state and what have you.
Lorenzo, let me ask you, Ben, can you put that slide backwards and you show the front or, or the, or the map, or you show the lot? Lorenzo, let me ask you this. And I'll play devil's advocate, okay? I'll play devil's advocate. That's a subject, further to the west and to, yeah, to the west, you have some office buildings.
I see them, yes, sir.
Do you oppose those?
Oh, actually, I've been there three years. I think they were there already. And I wouldn't oppose if they wanna do something with a building next door, as far as the building itself and coming in and, you know, the building, but the building, it's a shack, a little trailer and a deck.
No, but I mean, no, if it's rezone and, and, and that knocked down, I mean...
Well, well, in the first place...
Let me explain some.
Well, let me, let me go a little bit further back.
Let me explain some, Lorenzo.
Yeah.
Does this result in commercial?
I think it's restricted commercial and they're trying to up it up. The only, the only reason I'm here, and, and all reality too, is my taxes went up another eight hundred, I paid five thousand dollars to start off. Now, it went up another eight hundred dollars for next year. If they get another commercial, they're gonna bump up the price, which I'm, I'm good at where, excuse, let me finish, let me finish. I'm good at what I'm paying right now. I mean, everybody I know, everybody's trying to make a dollar, whatever they're trying to sell, they're trying to build, that's fine. But as far as, as, you know, when I went in there, it went up already and I know it went up everywhere, but I don't want, you know, his property's gonna go up and double up, because it's going to another commercial zoning or whatever. And I know my property probably go up another, I don't know how many, a thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars on taxes. And I'm just trying to keep my kids, when I bought it, it, it's almost two acres also. And when I bought, I saw that risaka on the back, it's beautiful. My next door neighbor's lot is beautiful and, and my other next door neighbor on that, I mean, when the first bought it was because of the risaka and the property itself. Not, not laying a big old driveway with parking lots and all of that, it, it, I'm thinking it's residential. I know it's commercial, but I was part residential. And, and, and my point is I'm trying to keep my residential property, not with the cars coming in next door, not with, you know, all the cars driving in and out, forty cars at, I have five daughters to take off. And when I bought that property was, because I didn't have my neighbors or my kids running on the street where I used to live, and, and this right here, you know, and I wasn't notified in the first place. They say they mailed out letters, whatever. I didn't get a letter. That's why we weren't here.
Why didn't you get a letter, Ben? Uh, they're probably, they're outside the...
They're outside the hundred feet.
They're two hundred feet, we're going to get a letter, you know. Okay, you'll, you'll get your chance in there. You'll get your chance in there, you get a chance.
Then, I believe my mail is right in front of the street, so, I mean, I would've think it...
Let me explain some. So, so you'll know for next year when you get your property tax assessment. Your property tax assessment has nothing to do with what we do here, okay? It's, it should not.
Well, I believe that if it goes up on property, it should affect everybody around the block.
But let me explain to you, because I'm an appraiser.
Mm-hmm.
You have the right to sign the protest in appeal, because the assessment should be with similar type of properties as yours that have sold in the market in that area. That's what you're basically, not on the commercial, your home state. If this is, if it's rezone, I know what happens. If it is rezone to commercial, then they will pay much higher property taxes, because it, it loses the home state, which is different city, which we need money, okay? That, that's, that's the way I look at it. So, if it's an office and they oppose the offices through the west, I wanna know what, how can I justify opposing this if the city approved the other offices through the west?
Yeah, but it's an existing building. And this right here, they're trying to knock...
It's gonna be knocked down.
That's what I'm saying. The, the, the offices right now are the old houses itself.
They kept the integrity of...
Yeah, it's the, the house, they built the business inside the house. Now, this guy's trying to knock down, I mean, I don't talk bad about my neighbor, I know him pretty good and, and it's not a house.
You prefer to have that than a nice building?
Well, actually, I mean, the setting itself, I don't know if you've been around there, the setting itself is, besides the risaka on the back, it, it's beautiful, you know, as far as his property, he's got a real good property.
But they're gonna upgrade it, I mean, don't you think that's, that's good?
Actually, it, it's in a flood zone also, you know, it's in a flood zone and, and all that parking, I wouldn't want...
They can't build on it. I mean, the engineers would have, have something to say, the city engineers would have something to say, I don't know. I mean, it would seem to me that...
I don't think it would, they would be able to work out of that, but...
Okay, next person, can I hear from the next person? Thank you, Lorenzo.
My name is Candace Christie and I'm...
Your name is, your name is who?
Candace Christie. I also live on thirty-nine twenty-six in this beautiful risaka. We have a beautiful white line. But I wanna know how come I didn't get a, a letter coming to the...
According to Ben, because you're not within the two hundred feet that requires us to go find it.
Oh, okay.
You gotta be within two hundred.
But I hope next time...
The way they look at it is that if you're within two hundred feet, you're, you're directing impact.
But I hope next time y'all, you know, send somebody and, and put a little flyer, hey, come to this meeting. That's what I would like to, you know. I'm only like two doors from Lorenzo. I live right next to, to Lorenzo, my neighbor.
According to Ben, that you're, you're, you're away. Next person, please.
My name is Sergio Peña. Sergio, sir. Two hundred feet, huh? Those properties are two acres, so two hundred feet is like within the property, right? So, one neighbor on the left, one neighbor on the right, and two doors to the left, to the west. It's a beautiful risaka, beautiful place to raise a family. Just because this property is abandoned and it's been there for many years, it doesn't give the right to the city or to anybody else to do away from this beautiful place. Having twenty, thirty, forty cars parking there will probably leak some oil.
Were you there, two, two houses down?
Thirty-nine forty-two, yes, two properties down, three properties down.
The west side?
To the west, yes.
On the same side?
Where there's retail.
On the same, on the same, yeah. It's his property and then the gentleman that just spoke and then her and then us.
So, you're close to the offices already, right?
There's one engineering building or something like that on the other street, not on our same block after you go to Acacia Lake Drive.
What street do you live on?
Boca Chica.
You live on Boca Chica.
Do you know the area where we're talking here?
Yeah, I was there. You said to the west, the west is where the office buildings are.
Correct, there's a street and then after the street, that's where the professional building is.
You live on the other side of Owens?
No.
Where do you live?
Between Owens and Acacia Lake. My lot is number ten.
Where the green H is.
No, he lives on the other side. No, the other way, the other way.
So, he lives east.
So, this right here, the little one right here, right before the street. This is Owens? Okay, so, right here.
That's east.
That's west.
That's one, one acre property right there. Two, two lots.
It's going towards four corners.
Well, whatever, fuck.
Four corners is that way.
West. To the right is west, right? Well, whatever, I'm confused here. All I'm saying is, well...
Facing, facing it, you to the right or to the left?
Uh, to the right, one, two, three lots.
To the right?
To the right, right here, yeah.
That's west.
To the right.
Going to the airport. Billy Mitchell's right here.
Well, whatever. What I wanted to say is I'm just two lots down. It's a beautiful property, there's the risaka right there, you put twenty, thirty, forty cars, whatever you put in that, his parking lot, they'll eventually leak oil. It goes to the water and it's a, it's a nice place to raise a family. There's families living there, we're not the only ones. And now we're trying to put, you know, traffic and cars and going through. Evidence doesn't affect you personally, that's why it's just another number, right? Because some of us are affected directly and personally. How would you like to have a professional building next to your house? Ask that question to yourselves. Not notified because two hundred feet, well, two hundred feet, I'm like a thousand feet. His property is two acres, one acre, two acres, one acre. Of course, we're not gonna get notified, but we'll get affected, right? So, you want to have a professional building next to your house? Do you, sir? Do you do? Any of you?
I have one.
Probably not. But if somebody else has, so who cares, right?
No, no, that's not...
I have one, by the way.
We have, we have similar situation, I live two hours from here. Similar situation.
We have a business right between us.
All I'm trying to say, we were not notified.
Residents converted to, to, to commercial. I mean, how, how many houses, that's, how many houses from you?
Two.
Two houses from me.
And were you notified?
Yes.
We were not. You had the right to say no, right? And we didn't.
We were within two hundred feet.
We were within two hundred feet.
Exactly.
You're not.
Exactly, because each property here is one acre.
Mr. Peña, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can we have somebody else?
Good evening. My name is Abraham Galonski and I lived in Acacia Lake for about forty...
Can you go through the mic, Mr. Galonski?
For about forty years. And it is, Acacia Lake is, is a residential area, but as soon as you get off or out from Acacia Lake, it's Boca Chica. And I've been living here forty-five years. Boca Chica is designated to be a commercial street. It's one of the most commercial streets in town. Now, that area, there is already a lot of businesses. There is a Lopez supermarket, there is a bar, there is barber shops. And whoever buys a home or a lot in a street like Boca Chica should know that is not, it has always been half-commercial. So, I personally think that there is no way in the world to stop Boca Chica from being commercial. And they are really not asking much, because it's really for an office building and they are willing, and this, the, the all areas residential, we need services. We have a barber, we have a bar, we have a, a, a supermarket, we have quite a few restaurants and, and cleaners. So, I don't see what problem there is with it. I really don't. I personally have no problem. And I was the one that supported, that supported the Vasquez that, that serves... And I was the one that supported, supported the Vasquez, that, that surveyor and, and that other bookkeeper. Because this is to service the area, it's not, it's not, they're not going to make a, a tire shop or a manufacturer or welder or something. It goes with the area, thank you very much.
So this is similar, Mr. Galonski, would you say this is similar to Boca Chica, east of the expressway where H and B is all asphalt, commercial? West of the expressway is office.
Yeah, but this is, this is a much lesser zoning intent.
But all the businesses start after on this aisle, they don't have a particular like, they're small there.
Sir, I, I don't want to go for personalities, but if you, if you-
But it's my neighbor, one of my true neighbors, but I'm trying to make sense. We were trying to save everyone, but you're not taking it. And all the businesses start right after, those businesses start right after Owens, not this one.
Okay, Art, you live there?
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good evening.
You're speaking as a citizen, right?
I'm speaking as a citizen, that, that is a city employee.
Are you for or against?
I want to give some background and then I'll tell you.
One politician.
This, this area has been changing through the years, bit by bit, property by property. It is correct to say that this area started with one lot being converted from residential to specific use. Then came another one, then came another one. So we're at a point now where sooner or later, we're going to hit a threshold where other property owners will come and say, well, you look, three fifths or three or five tenths of these properties have already been commercialized. So the point and the concern from the citizens is at what point does it stop? Either planning and zoning takes the reins and say, this will be an overlay where we want to maintain it as a specific use, professional area? Or it doesn't, but it unsettles the neighborhood because you don't know what's going to go next. And, and it sets people, wait a minute, what's, what's about to be put in that location? Uh, there are some impacts to Acacia Lake directly, and that is the traffic flow. Uh, three years ago, or about four years ago, then a mayor, or not, um, I forget the, the prior mayor's name. But when, when the people came before it, one of the main issues was the traffic floor, where, traffic flow there at Vasquez Surveying and the impact that it had. We continue to live with those impacts, trying to leave that street. So the alternative now is to leave Acacia Lake through Aguiladrive, because it's a safer way to get out. Now, the question for the commission and for planning and zoning is if they're going to, if this is going to be a trend to, that someone will be here in the, in the future to also get their property commercialized, what is the long range planning there to try and get out of that, out of that Acacia Lake? Are we going to widen the road, are we going to put streets? Or what is going to occur? And I think that is one of the issues for me living along that street.
Are they going to want P U B to do the upgrades on the sewer?
That's, that's correct.
They opposed, they opposed, the, the, P U B got a grant to, to, to provide sewer for them, they, they refused it. Now I get complaints from that area, they want, the, the, when the sewer is overflowing, they're septic. You know, it's urban, it's not rural anymore. And there is change, changes inevitable.
Correct.
But I want you to tell me how it directly impact, directly impacts that neighborhood when the interest is, is, is quite a distance from it.
Right now, one, for me personally-
You got, you got, you got traffic going towards the airport.
Forty thousand cars a day passing.
Yeah, for, for me personally, right now is ingress and egress out of, out of Boca Chica.
But you have forty thousand cars going through there every day.
Right, that are braking to stop to try and get into the businesses. That, you, you make a very good point. You've got forty thousand vehicles who are braking, trying to get in and out of what is now a commercial property.
I had an accident in a driveway about a year ago, my car got totaled by going into the driveway.
Okay, it's a state road, right?
But, but it's a very good point, you do have very high traffic in that area. And before, it used to be the traffic used to flow at, I guess it's like forty, forty miles an hour and it was smooth traffic. Now it's stopping, sudden stopping, because now there's more commercial lots in that location. I'm not saying it's good or bad, what I'm saying is if it's going to be doing, it needs to be done either in the master plan, but if it's done lot by lot by lot, it, we're always going to be coming to a head on this issue. It, it either needs to be-
It's like you're saying, you should quit to go to the airport, because the traffic density is going to increase. Going that way is going to affect the neighborhood, that's ridiculous.
No, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that the traffic flow is there, no, no one's saying it isn't. But what we're saying is we're going to ignore that this is where forty thousand people going to the airport that see Brownsville, don't appreciate some of the landscape that's available. We're missing an opportunity as well.
Let me ask you this.
There's a horrible housing for that landscape.
If you're familiar with Boca Chica, the expressway, west of the expressway and east of the expressway. West of the expressway is a dry zone. You cannot open a bar, you cannot open a detail, you cannot do anything for the most part, okay? Uh, it's all residential or office.
Correct.
But you see that happening with over here with Boca Chica?
That is something potentially that the neighborhood association could, could consider.
It's all about me, 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 but what does it have to do with the, the, the health of the city to where it's going to bring more revenues from city? It's going to create jobs, okay? You have an office, good job, okay? And it's not impacting the access, the ingress or egress, because it's not like by there.
No, I don't think, I'm saying I'm against it, I'm saying it needs to be a specific use. It needs to be a specific use property.
When you went for specific use, it was turned down twice.
Twice.
Twice. So now the P and Z comes and tells us and recommends-
Well, first, first commercial specific use, is, is my, my opinion on that.
Yes, Mr. Valdez, how long ago was the specific use requested?
We were the first, it's been about ten years or no, after about fifteen years, and we did the first one. And then about five years after that, when the makeup of the city commission moved. But, uh, with, you know, and, and these, believe it or not, back then, we had about a hundred people come in here and protest since we were the first applicants on that. And, uh, back then, they just, they didn't want any commercial, any commercial. We bought that property speculating that it was commercial, like you, you mentioned. There's seven thousand cars that pass there an hour, uh, you know? I don't know how, that's what, you're a businessman, that's what you look for, you look for traffic count. And, uh, and this, we agreed, uh, working real close with the Planning and Zoning Commission, we agreed and we met with them and we worked with them. And they, when we got the most restrictive, uh, for a, for a commercial, uh, business, this is, and, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't see what they're, I, I understand what they're saying, you know, but, uh, uh, you know, they're, we all have families, we all have, but we all, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. You know, some people like to live, uh, places where I don't particularly wish to, uh, think that, or wish to live there. But for, for, this is a, a professional, commercial G specification, and that's going to safeguard with a lot of their prob, with a lot of their concerns. And then we have, then we also have building requirements, that we're not just going to be able to go in there and do whatever we want. This, this designation of commercial, uh, uh, the, this commercial designation protects them on that. The, you know, to build it a certain way for the aesthetics and to maintain the integrity of that neighborhood, like they wish. So.
Anybody else?
We're close.
Second.
You have a motion to close, and a second. Uh, Commissioner Axus makes a motion and Commissioner Camarillo sentences, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Or a motion carries, this is an actual item, which wishes the commission?
I'm going to approve, uh, this item based on, on how the ordinance stands, where it protects the integrity of that, uh, area. And it coexists with what the existing businesses besides that area is doing.
Commissioner, can you approve in your motion of your mind, a twenty foot setback?
Sure. Sure, yeah.
And I have a question, this would be for a first commercial, commercial designation only?
No, no, what, what, what they, what they's only for is professional office.
Professional office, it's the first, I'll say, first one.
Professional office, yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Ben, that's not specific use, correct?
No, it's not specific.
Do we have a second? You got a second, Commissioner Ramon Rodeo, any further discussion? Okay, uh, I appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood, but I don't, I personally don't find where it, it affects the ingress or egress. Or the, the, the harmony of the neighborhood, it being across the Resaca from the neighborhood. Based on that, I have to go with the land use that's there, which is all this, 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 uh, going from residential to, uh, office. And I think that's good, because it's going to add revenues to our tax base for the city. The value is going to be decreased without property. If your value is impacted as a, as a residence, I urge you to hire me, I'm an appraiser, I go protest for you.
Well, no advertising, they can go see him as a lawyer though.
I don't need another appraiser.
Okay, but if you have any problems, I'd be glad to help and free, okay? On that.
And that's what you're just ruled against, is the integrity of a, of a residential area in the city. Over three. And shame on you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming here. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? How many nays? One nay, and you pass. Okay, public comments. Thank you all for coming. Okay, uh, public comments, where's the sheets? Uh, the first is, uh, Craig Grove.
He's left already.
He left. Okay. Ernesto Lisondo Junior, he left?
Yes.
Okay. Roberto Reste, twelve twenty, Kai Pluton, Galaxia.
I wanted to come up during the, uh, passing of the CEOs. And I was thinking about the United Front of Brownsville. I didn't hear anything about the Brownsville Independent School District input by far as putting a, a gym, because they have plenty of gyms and they got them all over the city, yet they don't open the doors during the summer. And they should. With a half a billion dollars or more on their budget, and they can't afford to open the doors to the children of Brownsville? Something is wrong there.
Why don't you take that to the B I S D? Why don't you take that issue to the B I S D?
I think you all decided to join the United Front, and that's why I'm bringing it up right now, sir. Because you all should have worked together, and that's why you put it together. I didn't, you guys did it. So, what I'm saying is, you know, that's something should have been brought up. Another thing is that the, a gym, the cost down the road, you're right, it's going to cost more money to run it. You're going to have to hire someone to keep it, maintain it. Why don't we just put a, a, a shelter over it? Open air, and that's it.
I wish you'd take this to B I S D, I mean, that's our, our-
No, no, sir, you're, we're going to be putting up this money. And it seems like we can get five percent of the voters and make you have an election to approve the CEO. If you didn't said that, it's, I'm saying it right now. It is. So it looks like you do whatever you want to, basically. This board is already fast-tracked to whatever it is. We have an economy that's already messed up, we have so many things going wrong with City Brownsville, yet we don't look realistically what Brownsville really needs. Yes, you're right, Mayor, you said something about the zoo, that is the key point of the whole city. I love the zoo. And if I could do something to help the zoo, I would do it. That is the number one thing Brownsville has, that is number one. And I wish it could get more funding. Yes, I wish, because I do love that. I go to a lot of zoos all over the United States and I see what they're doing. They're bigger, expand, we don't have that much to expand our zoo. And that's something that's hindering, uh, City of Brownsville. We need to bring in tourism. And that's the first thing we have to do, because that's going to bring us more money. But we're not working with that. And one idea I'm going to bring, and I'll talk to Mr. Patterson to, tomorrow, is we have those decoys on the side of the expressway. They're beautiful, but nobody has painted them. And they need to be painted with the colors. And we can put Brownsville there, instead of spending a hundred fifty thousand dollars on a sign that says, welcome to Brownsville, we could put Brownsville on those things next to those animals and put in fluorescent colors. So we won't have to spend any money at night, so you can see them day and night with the original colors of those birds, of the, the waves of the City of Brownsville. That's an idea that should be brought up. And that's something you can bring, because we need to bring people to Brownsville so they can spend their money here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reste. Dag, you're next.
No more there. Honorable Mayor, Mr. Commissioners and my American citizens. I'm here for one simple reason, to urge you with great hope for you not to indebted us taxpayers anymore. I hope you have seen the news lately, because you don't get the real, realistic news watching the soccer games y las novelas. Ladies and gentlemen, we're in America, we're in deep financial trouble. Our debt is so big that we have ran out of numbers. It's in the trillions of dollars. Who do we owe this money to? To China, a rich nation that the only thing they have was rice and a lot of people. Our founding fathers are turning over in their grave, because we didn't learn from the old fathers of how to save, how to be frugal and to be thrift, thriftness. Some here done even owe their class in one oh one, a penny saved is a penny earned. In Harlingen, several commissions were not seated, because they ran, when they ran for office, because they owed taxes. Spending money without our tax, with our taxpayers' consent is plain wrong, people. It is our money, you need to get our consent. How can you stick your hands into my pocket without my authority? Besides, there's some group of attorneys, not, not from here, that are looking into this scheme where you can raise, uh, uh, what we are doing without consenting the people. Besides spending our hard-earned money, you're in hard recession times, it's bad, it's a bad thing to do. At the credit union, there's hundreds of cars, almost new, that are being repossessed. Why? Because people that make three hu, three dol, six dollars and fifty cents an hour, buy new cars with, they, they don't have the means to pay it. Before you know it, they're repossessed. Houses all over the place are the same way. A lot of these people want to live like Frankie Turia. Frankie Turia has ranches, cattle and oil. These people that make six fifty an hour don't have those things. Look at Texas Armo's College and U T V. They got new board members. Why? Because their spending is too high, they got some new people. I beg of you as a realistic professional counselor, that is very frugal with his money, not to raise, uh, uh, get us into debt any more than what we already are in. I hope you all have paid your taxes, if not, you have to hawk yourself to pay those, those taxes like some of the people in Harlingen had to do. Be realistic and learn to live within your means. Please take this from a debt-free taxpayer.
Time is up.
And a realistic, real conservative, down-to-earth citizen, because I do not owe anything, but I live within my medium means. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dag. I was hoping to bring in McDonald's hamburger. It's always good to see you, Dag. I like your shirt.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I guess I'm deeply troubled today, because of what you read in the newspapers, maybe it's true, maybe it's not, we don't really know. But there seems to be things that can really put a burden on the taxpayers and the citizens of Brownsville. What I see-
In order to be...
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I guess I'm deeply troubled today because of what you read in the newspapers. Maybe it's true, maybe it's not, we don't really know. But there seems to be things that, uh, can really put a burden on the taxpayers and the citizens of Brownsville. What I see, um, is that I hear Mr. Pete Gonzalez telling this commission over and over again, we have a shortfall, a multimillion-dollar shortfall in the budget. I don't hear any response from the commissioners. I don't know what their thoughts are or what their, their thoughts might be. But I am concerned, can, and am concerned that we don't see the same thing we saw in two thousand nine, where, um, members of, some members of the city commission, um, went out to the public and said, "We have a crisis." Indeed, I don't think it's a crisis, or it wasn't a crisis. I mean, you hold commissioners' court meetings every two weeks and you're updated by your finance director. So it can't be that you're not told what the sta- status of your, your city, uh, uh, budget is and how you're, you're either meeting it or not meeting it. So if we're gonna go into the same thing in, in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and we're looking just a repeat of what was before, I think lessons learned. Somebody's gotta learn a lesson, if not all. I mean, it, it was to my, in my eyes, it was, uh, um, I'm sorry to say the word. And I apologize for the word, but it was very high theatrics. And it's very, very concerning and very disconcerting to the citizens that are, that are here and they watch by, by television. And, 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 and so do children, so do schoolchildren and so forth. So these things are, are deeply troubling. And what right now comes to, to focus is, uh, what are we doing now? Um, certificates of obligation, what's gonna happen? What are we doing? Where are we going? What direction? Everybody wants to go in a different direction. The concerns of the mayor is one thing, the concerns of another commissioner is another. We have concerns. We see division. We see a lot of division. And division is not always, and never will be, to the positive end, okay? So we need to, we need to look, I think we need to look a little bit closer or maybe take a second look at what direction do we really want? Now, what I seem to see is that, um, we're using political maneuverings to get what we really want. And we are all different. We have different agendas, we have different thoughts, we have different ideas. But to get our, our ideas across, we must use other, uh, agencies or other rules or other laws.
Time's up.
May I finish? Okay. Uh, so what I see is that, that we need to do something, we're not, we're not acknowledging our laws, our city's charter. We need to, either we're going to follow it or we're gonna throw it out the window. If it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist. Okay, so the only thing I'm gonna say is at, to the conclusion is, this is what I see, pay as you go, okay? And, uh, if your budget doesn't include it, then it's not necessary. Stop the corruption and the rape of the city charter. Let the citizens please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, item nine.
Item nine, consideration in action on a land lease with the Civil Air Patrol for five acres of land on the east side of Brownsville South Potter Island International Airport.
Mayor, City Commissioners, the city commissioners act to consider and act upon a land lease between the Civil Air Patrol and the City of Brownsville at the airport. The lease allows the Civil Air Patrol to pursue grant funding to construct a new Civil Air Patrol headquarters. The Civil Air Patrol is an arm of the U.S. Air Force, provides benefits to the airport and to the city in the form of search and rescue for downed pilots, uh, pilot training, as well as exposure to aviation for children and so forth. Their presence is welcome at the Brownsville South Potter Island International Airport. The site is located on the east side of the airport at the end of Millard Road where the pavement ends. I'd like to introduce also Major Sean Crandall, who is with us in the back. Uh, Sean is actually the person in charge of the Civil Air Patrol. Uh, the staff recommends approval and the Airport Advisory Board recommends approval of this lease. Also, Sean's here to ask any questions.
Thank you, Marana, you're here. Any questions? Would you like to add anything to that?
Um, just, Civil Air Patrol is a well-kept secret. Um, we've been at the Brownsville Airport since the last week of December of nineteen forty-one. We started off as a coastal patrol unit. Um, I would like to come back and do an actual presentation to the city commission, uh, whenever I'm invited to do so.
The invitation's open.
Thank you very much.
We set it up with the city manager, city secretary.
And we've been continuously at the Brownsville Airport since June fourth, nineteen fifty-five.
I see the planes flying around.
It's good.
Your motion approved, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Item ten.
Item ten, consideration in action on a lease with Worldwide Consolidated Logistics for a portion of the Brownsville Air Cargo Facility to operate an air freight forwarding business.
Mayor, City Commissioners, the city commissioners asked to consider and act on the lease between the City of Brownsville and the firm of Worldwide Logistics for space in the thirty thousand square foot air cargo building on the east side of the airport. The lease is for one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight feet, square feet of office space, seventy-five hundred square feet of landslide loading area ramp, as well as a right of first refusal on thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five square feet of warehouse space. The use will be for an air freight forwarding business as well as a TSA-certified air cargo screening facility, which will be required to be used, uh, across the country in, uh, August. I would note that both, uh, Mr. Bob Hendricks, who is the president, as well as Richard Allenese, who is the vice president, are here from Worldwide Logistics. Should you have any questions? Uh, further note that both the staff, as well as the Airport Advisory Board recommend approval of this lease. We're here to address any questions.
Any questions? Okay, this is an action item? Commissioner Sumora makes a motion, Commissioner Brown, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Commissioner Carrion?
Thank you.
Item eleven, thank you, Larry.
Item eleven, consideration in action on resolution number twenty-ten dash zero four one to authorize the filing of a grant application and execution of grant agreements with the Federal Transit Administration for the Brownsville Urban System Operations and Maintenance Facility Rehabilitation Project.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Uh, the Federal Transit Administration announced the availability of bus and bus facility grant funds in support of its State of Good Repair Initiative. The State of Good Repair and Bus Initiative, uh, will make funds available to public transit providers to replace, rehabilitate, uh, bus-related facilities and equipment. Um, bus will be applying for the City of Brownsville and bus will be applying for funds to, to repair the, the, repair the main facility at seven hundred Jose Colunga. Some of the repairs that we will be, um, conducting would be requesting for would be replacing the roof, the siding and the structural components of two buildings, replacing and enclosing the bus washer, repairing and rehabilitating the parking and circulation area, and, and rehabilitation of the stormwater conveyance and retention, retention system at the yard. We will also be requesting for funding to replace vehicles in anticipation of the capital outlay required to replace vehicles that will reach the end of their useful life within the next three years. The estimated total project cost is three million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars, with, um, local match being at six hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine. We're requesting authorization to allow us to, um, authorize the city manager to file a grant application and execute a grant agreement if we're successful with a grant.
Motion approved. Motion approved, Commissioner Margolia, seconded, Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm tired, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seventeen.
Item seventeen, consideration in action to authorize the design and construction of a traffic signal to be located at intersection of, of U S two eighty-one at Carmen Boulevard.
Motion approved. Seconded, approved by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Aggerson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eighteen.
Item eighteen, consideration in action to award a contract for the construction of improvements at Brownsville Sports Park.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Uh, staff recommendation is to award a contract for job order, contract, uh, for construction and improvement for the Brownsville Sports Park to Herrera and Hunt Incorporated of Los Fresnos, Texas. Uh, this is the approved contractor under the Choice Facilities Partners of the Harris County Department of Education Agency with whom the city, uh, the City of Brownsville has entered into an interlocal agreement uh, to design, for design and construction improvement and improvements in the amount of two million, seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred. Completion time for this is two hundred and ten consecutive calendar days. And funding for this procurement is in place and it will be reimbursed a hundred percent, uh, by the B C I C.
Motion approved. Motion approved, Richard Aggerson, seconded, seconded, Commissioner Margolia. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion carries.
Item nineteen, consideration in ac- consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery and installation of bleachers for phase two of the Brownsville Sports Park.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery and installation of sport, uh, sport, uh, ground bleacher system for the Brownsville Sports Park, multi-use field, artificial turf area to, uh, Stur Steel Company of Waco, Texas, in the amount of nine hundred and sixteen thousand. And this is delivered and installed in place. This procurement reflects by-board contracting pricing. Uh, completion time for this is two hundred and ten consecutive calendar days. Funding is in place and it will be reimbursed a hundred percent by the B C I C.
Motion approved. Motion approved by Commissioner Aggerson, seconded by Commissioner Margolia. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, before we adjourn, let me make an announcement. Tomorrow, uh, at the library, it's gonna be a public hearing on the proposed East Morrison Road. Hopefully people will go and support it. That'll increase our tax base and it'll be good for the city to alleviate congestion. At the library tomorrow, six P M, at the library, East Morrison Road. Motion to adjourn, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Commissioners.
Thank you, uh, Dag, thank you for coming.
Thank you.